Chapter number nine. And I want to commence reading in verses fourteen through verse twenty-nine. When they came to the disciples, they saw a great crowd around them and some scribes arguing with him. When the whole crowd saw him, they were immediately overcome with awe. And they ran forward to greet him. He asked them, what are you arguing about with him? Someone from the crowd answered him, teacher, I brought you my son. He has a spirit that makes him unable to speak. And whatever, whenever it seizes him, it dashes him down and he foams and grinds his teeth and becomes rigid. And I asked your disciples to cast it out, but they could not do so. He answered them, you faithless generation. How much longer must I be among you? How much longer must I put up with you? Bring him to me. And they brought the boy to him. When the spirit saw him, immediately it convulsed the boy and he fell on the ground and rolled about foaming at the mouth. Jesus asked the father, how long has this been happening to him? And he said, from childhood. It is often cast him into the fire and into the water to destroy him, but if you are able to do anything, have pity on us and help us. Jesus said to him, if you are able, if you can believe, all things can be done for the one who believes. Immediately the father of the child cried out, I believe. Help my unbelief. When Jesus saw that a crowd came running together, he rebuked the unclean spirit, saying to it, you spirit that keeps this boy from speaking and hearing. I command you, come out of him and never enter him again. After crying out and convulsing him terribly, it came out and the boy was like a corpse, so that most of them said, he is dead. But Jesus took him by the hand and lifted him up and he was able to stand. When he had entered the house, his disciples asked him privately, why could we not cast it out? He said to them, this kind can only come out through prayer. Thank you so much. You may be seated. The grass withers and the flower fades. For the word of our God shall stand forever. I want to talk this morning from this subject at the crossroads of hope and despair. At the crossroads of hope and despair. The seminal figure of the Protestant Reformation, the theologian, author, professor, and Augustinian friar, and German priest named Martin Luther. Martin Luther called doubt the monster of uncertainty. Luther says that doubt is the gospel of despair. While Alfred Lord Tennyson wrote, there lives more faith in honest doubt than in half the creeds. According to the book in our study for this week and for these next several weeks, Getting Through the Tough Stuff by Dr. Charles Swindoll. Daniel Taylor, in the chapter on doubt, commenting about this matter of doubting, does not choose the term doubting Christians, but refers to people with questions as reflective Christians. Those who grapple not only with unanswered questions, but with unquestioned answers. Just read that one more time. He talks about people who are not doubters, but reflective. They are thinking, because the Christian religion is a thinking religion. When we come to God, we don't leave our brains outside. It's a thinking religion. We don't, we don't just deal with unanswered questions, but we have to grapple with unquestioned answers. A CNN anchor captured this thought succinctly, commenting on Governor Sarah Palin of Alaska in her vice presidential run with Senator John McCain. The CNN anchor says, it is not that she doesn't know the answers, she doesn't understand the question. And sadly, beloved, if you do not ask your questions, you will end up believing somebody else's answers. Simply put, many Christians are guilty of credulity. Credulity is believing without examination. We inherited our religion from our parents. We borrowed religion from our friends. We come to church because it is socially acceptable and expedient and it's a good place to hook up with a man or woman. And to God's chagrin, we are in possession of an unexamined faith, because we come to Jesus with the wrong questions. Brothers and sisters, we have been taught, and wrongly I suggest, we have been taught not to question God. But what kind of God would he be if he were intimidated by questions raised by my little finite infinitesimal mind? And we are in good biblical company when we ask God some questions. Abraham asked him, why would you destroy the righteous with the wicked? Rebecca asked him, how long? Moses asked him, why would you bring your people out and then not be able to bring them in? David asked him, why do the heathen rage and the wicked imagine a vain thing? Job said, if I knew where I could find him, I would rise and ask him some questions. Jeremiah asked, is there no bomb in Gilead? Is there no physician there? Why then is not the health of the daughter of my people recovered? Jesus asked him, why has thou forsaken me? And now somebody in here this morning who is a serious Christian, but you've got some serious questions. Why am I going through what I'm going through and folk who don't even love your name never even have a bad day? Brothers and sisters here, may a faith that cannot be tested is a faith that cannot be trusted. And if you are a serious believer, there are some days when you don't understand what God is doing. You don't know what God is up to in your life. You don't know why God is allowing some things to happen. That's why you got to have more than saving faith. You've got to have charismatic faith. Let me see if I can help you right there. The charismatics have beat us Baptists at this kind of faith. Charismatics just believe that God can do anything. No matter how crazy it sounds, no matter how wild it looks, no matter how many people are denying it's never going to happen. Charismatic faith is saying, I don't know how he's gonna fix it. I just believe he will. Charismatic faith says, it may not look like I'm gonna come through this, but you wait until the battle is over. Charismatics just start shouting before they get the answer, because if God does not give me an answer, he's the answer. I wish I had some charismatics in here this morning, who are on the other side of your situation and you don't know how God worked it out? You just shouted before you got the victory. Now to you little weak ninety-pound Christians, to you little anemic Christians, who just seen Jesus love me this, I know, for the Bible tells me so. I need some of us here who are grown in our faith, who've gotten away from now, I lay me down to sleep, I pray the Lord my soul to keep if I... No, 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 your prayer is, Lord, here I am. My back is up against a wall. I've done all I know how to do with that child. I have tried and I prayed and I prayed and I've tried. I've done everything my supervisor has told me to do and they're still trying to fire me. God, I need you to build a fence around me, so that when my enemy thinks that he has me trapped, I got charismatic faith. Faith that can move mountains. We owe to Mark's Gospel, the fullest account of the pathetic incident of the healing of the demon-possessed boy. Mark's Gospel alone gives us the conversation between our Lord and the afflicted child's father. But before a hominical unfolding and an exegetical presentation, there is, I think, a very evident and intentional contrast between verses one through thirteen.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is the D C N Smoke coming to you live with a briefing to talk about the Rockin' Mount City Council election results and to talk about moving forward to the November elections of all of the counties, towns in the county in IchCon County and abroad, but I'm gonna be concentrating on IchCon County moving forward. During the November fourth election, the Rockin' Mount City Council will have a runoff, so they will be on the ballot as well. But continue on, be back in a few minutes and to get right on out of your way.
In our pericope presently, between the transfiguration on Mount Tabor and the healing of the young boy, there's a difference between the calm serenity of the mountain and the hell-tortured misery in the valley. There's a contrast between the conversation with the sainted perfected dead, Moses and Elijah, and the conversation with their unworthy successors. Jesus had just been displayed in the resplendent glory he knew with his Father in eternity past. He spoke with Moses and Elijah, and he heard the voice of his Father say, this is my beloved son, hear him. Only to come down to a demon-possessed boy, an agonizing father, the sneering faces of the scribes, and the impotence of the disciples, who should have been able to do in his absence what he empowered them to do in his presence. I need to say to us, Lilly Grove, enjoy these mountaintop experiences on Sunday morning. Have a good time worshiping every time you come to church here, because if you would live godly in Christ Jesus, a valley is in your future. Because if you notice, it's when we have a good time in worship that when you go to work Monday, all hell breaks loose. I wish I had somebody to help me. Or even before Monday, sometimes when you get out of church in the parking lot, or sometimes before you walk out of the church with these hellish people you got to worship with. Because all the hell is not in hell. Some of the hell is in your family. Some of the hell is in your coworkers. Some of the hell is on your pew. And sometimes before you can get undressed from Sunday worship, there's a valley in your path. So enjoy yourself. Give God glory. Praise him. Shout hallelujah. Raise your hands. Hear the prayer. Hear the choir. Shout on the sermon. But know this, in this world, you will have tribulation. But I've got some good news for you. Be of good cheer. Jesus said, I have overcome the world. And we are more, more, more than conquerors through him that loved us. Walk with me around the text. Look with me at a sad father. A sad father. This father brings his boy to the church because he's heard about Jesus. The word has gotten out that he's a healer. The word has gotten out that he turned water into wine. The word has gotten out that the crowd was in the desert place and there was nowhere to buy any bread. And he took a little boy's lunch of two fish and five loaves and fed five thousand men, not counting women and children. The word got out that it was a man in the tombs cutting himself with stones. He didn't have any clothes on. He was a wild man. He was a Gadarean demoniac. And he met Jesus. And the next time they saw him, he had clothes on and he was in his right mind. So this man figured if he brought his boy to Jesus, Jesus could heal him. But when the man got there, Jesus was not present, but the ones who should have known how to do it because of their association with Jesus. He brought into Jesus disciples and they could not. And I don't know, because I'm not in your personal business like that, but I don't know how many parents are in here this morning who are burdened with a child who just won't act the way you raised him. A boy who strung out on some substance. A girl who thinks she's a woman before her time. You are struggling trying to raise children against the sensitivity of all of what's going on on Instagram, on Facebook, on Twitter. You are trying to get your children to see that these people are not your role models, but they still want to be homosexual. They still want to be gay. They still want to go out and do what they want to do. You have raised them in the fear of God. You watched them from babies sleeping in their crib. You fed them. You have clothed them. You have lived right before them and they've broken your heart. You brought them to church. You made them go to Sunday school. But things have gone left. And like this father, we understand the heartbreak of watching your child demon-possess. They have a demonic spirit that makes them talk back, makes them disobey. It's a, it's a, it's, it's the devil that has turned them into this Gothic clothing that they're wearing. It's demonic to walk out of your house looking like a fool, talking like an idiot. It is demonic to disrespect your teacher and the principal and the guidance counselor. It's demonic for your parents to raise you right and you want to do what you want to do. There are some parents in here like myself who've had some days to question whether or not you picked up the wrong baby at the hospital. I need two or three parents here who, who has wanted to go to the Bureau of Vital Statistics and ask them, can I see that fool's birth certificate? He looks like me. She talks like me, but it can't be the baby that I gave birth to. Because the devil and the influence of Satan turns parents, men and women sad. But they brought him, or he brought him, to the right place. He brought him to Jesus. Jesus was on the mountain being transfigured and his disciples, nine of them, now you mean nine creatures can't heal one boy? Nine of them, because the other three are on the mount, on the mount, on the Mount of Transfiguration. Nine of them are in the valley and Jesus is there with them and, and, and these boys, this parent brings this boy to where Jesus was and brings into Jesus disciples, and the sad word is they could not. So with this sad father, we see a sobering failure. The church failed. And beloved, the church is not this building. It's not budgets. It's not parking lots. It's not ministry. It's not programming. It's not singing. The church is the power of God. And every church on every street, on every corner that stands up with a steeple and advertises itself as a church is saying to the world, if you come in here, we got power. If you come in here, you can find God. If you come in here, you can find restoration. And when they come in here and don't find it, that's false advertising. If you claim to be one thing and people come here and don't get it, that's false advertising. They soberly failed. Because like many of us, they did not recognize that the only power they had was reflective from Jesus. And they should have been able to do in his absence what they could do in his presence, because Jesus has empowered them to cast our devils.
Good evening, everybody. This is, well, good afternoon. This is the D C N Smoke coming to you briefly, try to keep it briefly, with the election results of the Rockin' Mount Municipality, Rockin' Mount City Council on last night. I'm gonna start out with Ward seven. Jabaris Walker Kelly received three hundred and seventy-five votes to Thelma Bullock, two hundred and twenty-nine. Jabaris had sixty-one percent. Thelma Bullock had thirty-seven, so therefore no runoff could be, could be, she could not ask for a runoff. You have to get fifty plus one and he has sixty-one percent. The Ward six race, Tom Harris received six hundred and eighty-seven votes, a seventy-two percent. And Shanice Cotton received two hundred and fifty-one votes, twenty-six percent. Again, cannot request a runoff. What I want to say about those two awards is the folk in Rockin' Mount failed those two wars. There were two candidates for them here in Rockin' Mount, one at True Tabernacle and one at St. Mark. Now, they were held there. I don't, I'm not saying the church was responsible for having them. They just hosted them. But I talked to someone about both. They posed me about both. And I told them I could not cover it. I will not cover it, simply because they were focused on Ward three only and the other two wars needed to been heard. Because Ward three only had one vote and therefore they need all others. And it just hurts me to know that there were no candidates for them that included those two black females, Shanice Cotton and Thelma Bullock in this election. Makes no sense. I don't know where the ministerial lines was. I don't know where the sororities were. Any other organization. They failed those two elections races. Tom Harris and Shanice, I did not pick one. I don't know that much about, I don't know anything about Shanice. I do know Tom Harris. I've been attending meetings there when he came, got elected and I'm still there recording. I can live with him. One thing is because he's a baker. And although I felt that he came on board in the last hour when Andre Knight and Ruben, Andre Knight, Ruben and Richard was requesting information from the former city manager Keith Rogers. Tom was asking for information, but I don't think he pushed it until the last hour. Once he became mayor pro temp, which he is still mayor pro temp, and he got the disrespect that Andre M. was getting, then he too got on board when he disrespected the white man. Like I say, I like when people bring special expertise to organizations and Tom Harris being a retired banker. He was asking all the right questions. However, he, Jabaris Kelly, T J Walker, Elijah Ladd Altrich, were the majority four. When you had Andre Knight, Ruben Blackwell, Richard Joyner, Jabaris Kelly and T J Walker, five blacks on the council, a super majority. And I see it, the majority four consisted of Tom Harris, Ladd Altrich, T J Walker and Jabaris Kelly. Moving on down to the Ward three race. You had bottom up, you had Crystal Wives Anderson, seven votes, one percent. She ran against Richard Joyner in the past election, her and Blonsom Williams. I tried to tell Crystal Wives Anderson, I met her in Tarboro to sit down with her, went to the coffee shop. I had never been in the coffee shop in Tarboro. To sit down with her, went to the coffee shop, I had never been in the coffee shop in Tarboro. That's where she wanted to meet. And I went in and sat down and I tried to tell her then she had just moved here from Florida. And that she did not need to run, she needed to come in and, um, um. Learn who the people are and get active in the party. Ran again this time. Only got seven votes. And we had some conversation the other day when I pu, uh, posted, might have been yesterday. When I posted, uh, um, shared Teresa Austin Stokes post about the, uh, election voting places and. I posted, shared it and posted on my page, uh, who I would vote for. And she came on my page and responded. And that was to, I had said that, um, she ran against Richard Joyner. And he, um, helped her family. Like I said, she was new here from Florida and, um. They worked on the farm down there, helping him out down there on the farm. And, um. We had a conversation about that, we had a conversation about a meeting she attended. Some people asked her to come meet with them. I was supposed to, I was invited to the meeting, but I didn't go. I didn't see no need to go. And, um, she had a problem with that, but again, uh, she was new here. We keep it moving. Nayle Richardson, she got eleven votes, one percent, one point seven percent, um. Krista got one point one percent. Nayle Richardson, you remember her, love Rocky Mountain. Her and, um, Neil Smith was doing Love Rocky Mountain. Over there at Mount Zion, uh, first ballot. And, um, um. Love Rocky Mountain. Nayle, do you see how much they love you now? Do you see? Call me, send them a message. So hold on, y'all, let me send this message right quick. So I can get back and get out of your way. And get my day started. Alright. Get back to where I was. Okay, again, I was just saying that Nayle Richardson, love Rocky Mountain. Um, teamed up with the, uh, Mayor Santa Claus Robertson. Uh, over the years, her and Neil Smith, um, um. Love Rocky Mountain. Teammed up with some of them folk that, that used to come to the city council, I mean, uh, uh, um. Forty-seven, thirty-four supporters coming down attacking the black majority. But anyway. It's documented. My videos and the, um. Rocky Mount City Council YouTube page. Tim Barnes, the only Republican, he got seventeen votes, two point seven percent. Over the two Democrats, Nayle Richardson and Crystal Wives Anderson, I'll tell you so. Uh, Tim Barnes, the true Rocky Mountain, a comedian. I understand he's a damn good auto mechanic and that's what he needs to stick with. Uh, um, some time ago, he and I used to, um. Do a talk show, he did a talk show, I did a talk show, we'd be on each other's talk show. Um, I tried to tell him not to run, I told him he wasn't nothing but a clown. I wonder if I gonna take him serious, but seventeen folks did. Uh, matter of fact, the last talk show we did, um, I told him. That nobody gonna vote for him and he and his wife got, got mad with me and, and blocked me, but that's okay. But I haven't talked to him since then and he's talked about me on his page, um. Sup, uh, supported me when Bronson Williams, uh, threatened me in the court, in the, um, in the council chambers. Then he came back later, he supported Bronson. Then he came back, supported me, then he came back and supported Bronson, just all over the place, just ignorant. But he my boy though, I, I love me some Tim Barnes, cause he, we enlighten you, he, 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 uh, put them. Whole truths out there sometimes, then he'll put them half truths and then he'll put just flat out damn whole lies. But you gotta know the story. Tim Barnes, the true Rocky Mountain, seventeen votes, the only Republican in the race. You had Xavier Jones, he got thirty votes, four point eight percent. Uh, I liked the guy, but it just was not his time. It was not his time and when it's not your time, you just gotta wait your time when the opportunity comes. Um, Bronson Williams, a hundred and fifty-two votes. Third place received, uh, twenty-four percent of the, um, votes. If he had, uh, 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 continued like we did, um, some years ago. Uh, um, have a conversation about Rocky Mount City Council. Uh, talking to, um, um, Andre, Ruben, other folk. He could have been in a good place. But no, he and Nevermind Smith, uh, uh, um, um. They teamed up, turned against us. Uh, they did a whole week talk show about me when I went to them and told them that. What people were saying in the community about W N C R T V talk show format. I go to folk and tell folk, when people talk about people behind the back. I go tell the folk whether they get mad at me or not, and so that's what cost me. They did a whole week talk show on me, uh, brought a dog baby up there. Say headed me up there crying and all that kind of foolishness, do the dog baby. Uh, so I said, where, where do you get the dog baby from daycare? I said, y'all letting them have their day, cause I know one day. I knew one day. Cause everybody that have come for me, uh, um, they have had their day. Um. During this election, um, uh, he reached out to me. And, uh, asked me about, uh, uh, what I think about a candidate forum, I mean, a debate. Had I ever thought about hosting one through the D C N and, uh, um. He asked me who did, can't, did it, Ice County Democratic Party have candidate forums and I told him no. Uh, the Ice County Relation Commission always have one, ask your friend Roosevelt Hayes, cause he was up there until he. Moved to Rocky Mountain and, uh, finally moved his, um, uh, voter registration to Nesh County. I said, well, he can tell you, cause he was a part of it. Um. So, um, enough of that. Um, if you've been following me, you know the story behind me and Bronson. And if you don't, it's documented on my page. But I, I have no problem with the brother, um. I always try to support young folk, but when I get the disrespect, that's it. But I ain't mad with nobody. I hope we run into the brother soon and have a conversation about all of this. Um, moving on, he got one hundred fifty-two votes. He was in the top three, a hundred fifty-two votes, uh, twenty-four percent. Then you had Carl Rivers, who received a hundred seventy-two votes, uh, twenty-seven point six percent. Excuse me, I don't know Carl like that, um, um. He stays, uh, in the community where one of my cousins, um, slash sister lives and, um. I know of him through the Rocky Mountain Police Department, um. And everybody talking about crime in Rocky Mountain, but look, don't get it twisted, crime is everywhere. And it is not like folk, uh, uh, when it's at random, then I will have a, uh, do a double take. Right now is, um, the, the ones committing the crime are can, commend them against each other. So, um, uh, but anyway, I feel like Carl Rivers will bring a new perspective to the council. Being in law enforcement, like I said earlier about Tom Harris. I love it when people have an expertise, uh, um, on organizations or, or elected officials or whatever. So I think he bring his expertise to the council, which would take them a long way. Um, he's, um, uh, retired, so, uh, now's the time to give back. Charles Robertson received two hundred thirty-four votes, thirty-seven point five percent. So you have Charles Robertson one, uh, Carl Re, Rivers two, and Bronson William three. The only, the two top vote getters can, uh, have a runoff, so there will be a runoff. Between Charles and Carl on November the fourth. Um, the other municipalities across the county and, uh, across the state. Their elections are on November the fourth, so, um, you don't have to have a special election since the ballot, since the, uh, Board of Elections. Uh, will be, um, um, um. Doing an election on November the fourth anyway. Uh, but about Charles Robertson, I met him several years ago. Um, he's a good marketing person. He, uh, does video, uh, um, and all that stuff. However, I, um, I, I, I would rather support Carl Robert, Carl Rivers. Um, I was looking at the, the, uh, candidate forums, the one that was held at. True Tabernacle and the one that was held at Saint Mark A M E. And both of these candidate forums, uh, Carl Rivers was my guy. Just looking at the, um, candidate forum. He was the best, uh, uh, person, uh, um, um, that presented himself. Uh, responding to the questions and, uh, just how he carried himself during the candidate forum. Um, I couldn't get more into, uh, uh, Charles Robertson, but, um, I'll be back at another time. And I'll be, while I'll be, um, talking about other elections across the county. Uh, Canida, Princeville, Pine Tops, Tarboro. Them some interesting races, Whittakers. Interesting. So I, I, I guess, I got a lot to cover. Um, I was looking at, um, um, the newspaper where, uh, looking at the comments that. Uh, Jabaris Kelly made that he, um, that people trusted in him, um, um. They, um, they supported him. But my question to him is, I've been following the means long before he got on it. The council, long before any other council members that's on the council right now, uh, has been on it, on the council. My question to Jabaris Kelly is, what have you brought to the table? What have you brought to the table? The only thing that comes to mind to me, and I ain't talking about what nobody else said. Not what I heard, yeah, I did hear Carl was there. I'm talking about what I know, attending meetings monthly, recording them. The only thing I seen him bring to the table was Keith Rogers. Now prove me wrong, I don't know anything else that he has brought to the table. Uh, Tom Harris said he want, um, needed, uh, move, move forward, working together, I agree. I totally agree. Same thing with, uh, Jabaris did say that in one of his, um, I might say that, I was gonna go back and read it now, but I'm not. Um. Let me see. Um, congratulations to Ruben Blackwell, he was the only one, uh, Ward two that had no opposition. However, he did have a couple of right ears. Um. I just couldn't imagine having Bronson Williams, T J Walker. And, uh, Jay, Jabaris Kelly on that council at the same time. However, I do feel like, uh, Jabaris Kelly and T J will, uh, uh, uh. Change the way they have done things, uh, up until now. But, uh, Bronson. He was going against Andre and Ruben, like I said, years, uh, um, over the years, we have been, uh, uh. Instead discussing politics and he would have been a great choice, but he turned against us. And he, um, uh, was supporting Keith Rogers. Saying the old folk need to go home and all this kind of stuff, that's what they said about me on the show. And I'm always talking about what I done in the past and, and, uh, since, uh, the eighties and all that kind, it comes with wisdom, bro. It's wisdom and plus, I don't get paid to do what I do. And folks saying I'm out here to try to make a name for myself, what a hell of a damn way to make a name for myself, cause I've been, uh, uh, I've been buying my equipment. I don't get no, do no commercials like the TV show, like his TV show and, uh, uh, and stuff. I do get some donations every now and then and I appreciate, I got some faithful folk. But I cover the whole county, then out the county, you see me on the second Saturday of, uh, of each month. Where I'll be at this Saturday, uh, uh, somewhere around Williamson, uh, uh, with the. Uh, Eastern Ohio Civil Group consists of twenty-three counties, where I'm a regional director and, um, um, um. Uh, video the meetings, uh, and all that good stuff, out of pocket. Yep, but they, um, tried to give me a donation, but no, when I'm a part of an organization or whatever, I give back. Um, we just had our, um, first annual scholarship banquet in Tarboro at the. Uh, uh, East Coast Community College, um, uh, Innovation Center, Jenkins, born here Innovation Center. I, I secured that. Uh, I raised, uh, 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 well, around fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, towards the banquet, um, I worked it. I know what I bring to the table and I don't get paid. So, um, uh, when they talking about, I'm trying to make a name for myself, what a hell of a price to pay. But, um, I'm gonna get on out of here, um, I am so happy to see that Bronson Williams has endorsed, um. Carl Rivers. Um, was kind of leery because in the past, he has not endorsed anyone when he was not successful. Uh, he didn't endorse Teresa, uh, uh, Austin Stokes when. The both of them, uh, challenged, um, Santa Claus Robertson. In the election, um, and Teresa and Santa Claus Robertson went into a runoff. Um, the year, the, 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 the previous election, it was Santa Claus Robertson. Uh, what's his name, um. Forgot the boy name now. And Bronson, and he, um, um, when they were, um, going into the runoff. My man, uh, can't even think of his name now, he, he did not endorse anyone. Wow, why come I can't think of his name? Um, and then he, um, when Santa Claus Robertson did his campaign, well, after he won. He named a, a transition team. And this guy was his chair along with some other black folk. And so therefore, that's why I feel like Mayor Santa Claus Robertson is spending a lot of time. Trying to discredit, uh, uh, our congressman Don Davis. Uh, he, with all this going on, he's been, uh, uh, spending much time trying to discredit Don Davis. He got a post today, last night or sometime. But, um, I'm so glad two more Republicans got in the race. When the first one got in it, uh, well, well, they gonna, they got a file in, uh, December, but they have announced. And Santa Claus Robertson was pissed when the guy from Colorado County, I believe it was, uh, filed. He had like the seat belonged to him and now somebody out of Kinston has filed. So he got two Republican challenges. So that's gonna be interesting, cause that's gonna. So, that's gonna be interesting, cause that's gonna be, uh, 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 a funny race. Because they gonna have to show who is the most Trumpist. You hear what I say? They gonna have to show which one is the most Trumpist, forty-seven thirty-four supporter. That, that's gonna be their message. I support Trump more than you do. I cannot wait. Santa Claus Robertson, he gonna spend two million dollars of his money. He done spent, I don't know how many, uh, uh, probably around a million on the, uh, to just get the Rocky Mountain City Council seat. I mean, our mayor. And talking about, we gonna get through this thing, well, take that money, you talking about spending, uh, on, on their, uh, mayor, uh, on their congress seat. And give it back. Yeah, he said he give his paycheck to a, 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 a nonprofit, uh, uh, as a mayor. I wonder who that nonprofit is? If it's somebody that, uh, give it to the city, but that, that's another stuff, another thing. But, uh, again, y'all, um, um, I just wanna stop by to, um, give you the results of the. Uh, Rocky Mountain Municipality Election, uh, Ruben Blackwell retained his seat. Uh, Jabaris Kelly, uh, and, uh, Tom Harris retained their seats. Richard Joyner did not seek election, so there will be a runoff between Charles Robertson. Robertson and Carl Rivers. Carl Rivers is my guy. And simply because I watched the candidates forums and he both. And both of those, I feel he was the better person in his presentations. And because he's, um, retired law enforcement and folk talking about crime. Well, he needs to be at the table because he bring law enforcement, uh, 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 experience. Well, y'all, I'm gonna get out of here. I appreciate you tuning in. I am going to, uh, be back, uh, um, every chance I get. Gotta gear up now for the November election. Uh, gotta update folk, uh, educate folk on, uh, the Pine Top, Tarboro. Uh, Canida, uh, Whittaker, Princeville elections, I got, I got a job to do, y'all. And, and, um, you know, and I work a real job. Uh, I got more time now since my, my daddy has, uh, transitioned. Uh, um, so I got more time now, um, so, um, it will be on. And for all y'all. All of you candidates, I don't care who you are, black, white, Republican, Democrat. Uh, keep the same energy that you been keeping, cause the D C N smoke ain't no joke. I have no permanent friends, no permanent enemies, only permanent interests. I am for justice, no matter who is for or against. No, I ain't perfect, I ain't all that, but I am what I am, I tell people to hold me accountable, because I'm gonna hold you accountable. And when you got folk out here making decisions on my livelihood and others that allow me to speak for them. That's a damn problem. So, uh, keep on doing what you do, but know I am the professional political agitator. I am the watchdog of the east. And if you got a problem with me, that's a you problem. Because I know y'all don't wanna hear these truths. So on that note, y'all have a good day, good afternoon. I'll be back live again this afternoon around four o'clock, so stay tuned. Join me around four o'clock, again, the D C N. Out here trying to, uh, bring y'all good information. So stay tuned at four o'clock, you wanna see this, I will be live. Thank you.